Moving on to the public comment section. I'm allocated for public comment just three minutes of permission from the commission chair, additional time, we keep a record. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the planning commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for planning commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the planning commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. Note, in order to be considered by the planning commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for public hearing. And at all times, please use the microphone, take your name and address to the record. Also, I might add, if you have a telephone, we would greatly appreciate you putting it on vibrate or turning it off. Moving on to item three, and I want to make a comment here real quick. Ben Kimble, and I, senior planning director for the resource management agency, and I met on Monday, and there are going to be some changes coming to our flow of the template that we use for the public's benefit here. We are going to, beginning in November, oh, sorry, November, in June, I'm jumping way ahead, start adding to the responsibility of this commission to site plan review, review. And so we have decided, Ben and I, that probably an appropriate place for this in the format will be after the consent calendar. So for my fellow commissioners this morning, we're not going to do that today, but that is about where it will be, in between consent calendar and public hearing. And then also, we'll be doing some things later on in the director's report regarding the site plan review process, and the procedural discussions will be led by Ben. So let's go back to item three, approval of minutes. And we're approving the minutes from April 13th, 2011. Do I have any questions or comments about that from my fellow commissioner? If I have a motion or approval?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Deas?
Yes.
Hittiano?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you. Item four is the consent calendar. There are no consent calendar items this morning. Therefore, we will move on to item five for this agenda, which is a public hearing.
We're a little bit early, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we are.
Can we go down?
Do you have any other business, Ben, that you'd like to move forward on?
Mr. Chairman, we can go to items not timed right now, if you'd like. There's a, there's an item on the items not timed section that we...
Okay. Let's go to then item six. Items not timed, and this is six A, PSP M dash O two six slash MMD eleven dash zero one one. This is David Rosenbaum, DRB Riverland LLC. A minor modification to special use permit number PSP ten dash zero two six to modify a condition of approval to extend the hours of operation on Saturdays. And our contact this morning is John Heiser. Johnny? Good morning, John.
Good morning.
Chairman, Millies, and commissioners of the planning commission, and audience numbers. Yes, planning RMA group received a request from Mr. Rosenbaum, DBA or DBR's Bullfrogs Bar and Grill, requesting a minor modification to his recently approved use permit PSP ten O two six to extend the hours of operations on Saturdays from 11:00 PM through closing, which would be up to 2:00 AM per the ABC rules and regulations for being alcohol. I wanted to clarify that this request is asking the, if you agree with the request authorizing the planning and development director to review the proposed change as a minor modification and adopt the attached resolution establishing findings and conditions. See attachment number one. Two, option number two, move to approve subject to the modifications through additions or deletion of conditions as discussed. Option three, move to deny if you do not agree with the request. Option number four, continue the public hearing to future date. And option number five, refer back to staff for further study and report. Again, these minor modifications are held under our section 18 for use permits, variances, site plan reviews, et cetera. Any questions so far? This request. There has been recent concerns from both county council and lieutenant chambers regarding this request. I just received the information yesterday into this morning from lieutenant chambers that I could bring into the record, if you would like. County council would like to discuss this project a little bit further because of the minor modification versus an amendment to the use permit, so that the item could be sent out for the normal channels of notifying the surrounding property owners regarding the request and opening up SEQA.
Chairman, Mr. Heiser, if I may interrupt, we just sent a staff member to make copies of that, so we'll have a copy for you in just a moment.
And item number, the other second item from lieutenant chambers, which I just received recently this morning, and lieutenant chambers is in the audience, that he is not in agreement with modifying the use permit due to the shooting of the business on the 20th of May at, I believe, oh, forty-five hours. A security guard was shot two times to break up a fight inside, and also another fight in the parking lot the week before, and therefore is not supported from the lieutenant chambers of the sheriff's department. And so therefore, this request, again, is just extending the Saturday operations from 11:00 PM, which was just a condition, even though the SEQA document that was approved and the use permit requested to 2:00 AM for these operations.
Just for Saturday.
Well, just for Saturdays, correct. Any questions?
Comments? I remember this particular application.
How long has it been open now?
It's been open for about three or four months now.
And as far as the incidents, are these the two that have come up, or have there been other ones, or what's...
As far as, as far as I'm aware of, it's just the two incidences. And you can hear from the applicant or lieutenant chambers on that matter, if there's any additional incidences.
Can I just have a SEQA?
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, I don't think our sound system's on. I can't hear very well.
Yeah, I don't think you're turned on.
I don't, I don't think it's... All right. There.
Okay. Well, your commission can consider this matter today, whether or not it's a minor modification. But I also brought section 18 to show you that there are references that this process is for site plan, site development plans, and your commission may determine that this type of adjustment to the conditions requires a specialties permit amendment, which would come back. But either way, I think if the planning director was to deny this minor modification, the applicant would still have a chance to go and apply for specialties permit amendment. So I can hand out this...
I'll pass him down. Yeah.
What does, what did we just get there?
Passes down.
Oh, I thought, thank you. So council, you're saying we need to address this in page seven?
Yes.
And would you go over again what you just said a minute ago?
Sure. Page seven here, it, it says that the planning commission could delegate authority to approve without notice or hearing minor modifications to the site development plan for the use permit. And this has occurred in, in the conditions for the specialty use permit, there was delegation. But then your planning commission would have to determine if this is a minor modification because it's, it's limited to the site development plan. And in this case, the request is to change the hours of operation. So we think that that would properly fit under a specialties permit amendment. But lower, I also underlined where it says, "Director shall not approve minor modifications in site development plans that would modify the conditions." And I think that's maybe where some of the confusion was, because this is a condition, but it's not regarding a site plan. So, but your commission can still consider this today, and because all you're doing is making a determination whether or not it's a minor modification. So one is, does it fit under this section? And then the second question is, is it minor?
Do we have any, and I'll open the public hearing on this particular issue. Are there proponents and/or opponents?
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder, there's not necessarily an advertised public hearing for this. However, if you wish to receive comments, I think that's...
Okay. Does anyone want to step forward and make comments? Yes, sir. Either one.
I think the proponent goes first.
Please state your name and address.
My name is David Rosenbaum. My address is three one five one five Bluff Drive, Laguna Beach, California, nine, nine two six five one. First of all, just a little clarification from what John said. There was a significant incident. It was really early Saturday morning, a week ago, or last Saturday morning. It happened after the restaurant was closed, sometime after, maybe half an hour after the restaurant was closed. Somebody did fire shots. It was, it was from a distance from the restaurant. We know that because we have cameras inside, outside the restaurant, and on the parking lot. For those of you that haven't ever been there, it's a pretty large parking lot. Nothing shows on the, on the cameras, so we know it was from some distance beyond that. So fired, shots were fired. Even though it was after closing, we, we have employees working at least an hour and a half, sometimes several hours, after closing, cleaning, getting everything ready for the following day. So there were still probably eight, maybe even 10 employees working in the building. There was one security person in front, that's the person that got shot in the legs. Fortunately, he's okay. You know, we, obviously, we immediately called not only the sheriff, but paramedics. They came, treated him on site, took him to the hospital. I called his house late morning the next day, and he answered the phone, he was already home. So fortunately, he was okay. That doesn't, I'm not minimizing the significance of somebody being shot, but, you know, he's, he's okay now. In terms of other incidents, there, there was, we've been open for between three and four months. I believe we've had four fights on the property during that time. Two of those fights were two women fighting. We have always significant security on place anytime there's entertainment, anytime there's any kind of significant crowd. We overstaff for security, as I told you in January, that, that we would do. We also have multiple managers on site, so when there is a fight, it gets broken up immediately. People are removed from the building, calmed down in the parking lot, put in their cars, and sent away. I believe it's four times that's happened over these three-plus months. Those people that are in a fight are not allowed back in, you know, they're banned from coming back to the restaurant. We've done, you know, we've done significant work to both ensure the safety of our patrons, our employees, and to be good neighbors to neighbors in the community. We've done training with Kingsburg Police relative to property security measures. I have some further training pending with lieutenant chambers and the Tulare Sheriff's Department. We always overstaff on these occasions. You know, more people than we, than the sheriff and I agree needs to be there for the various size crowds. Like I said, we have procedures in place. If there is a fight, it's broken up immediately. Those people aren't welcome guests in the future. Relative to any kind of complaint from the neighbor, neighbors, in, in the period of time we've been open, we're open six days a week, we have live entertainment and dancing basically all days except for Saturday and Sunday. I believe the sheriff has not received one single complaint call from anyone relative to anything that has happened at our facility. If you remember the discussion from January, the reason behind a lot of these conditions were the history that stemmed from six-plus years ago, where I believe on average there were calls daily about complaints of things that happen on site. Well, again, as recently as my last conversation with him, I believe there hasn't been a single call yet. In terms of, of what we're, we're asking to be reviewed by the planning department, Saturday is a very important time for a business like mine. Most businesses like mine do a very significant percentage of their business on Saturdays. So we're at a significant disadvantage by not being able to do that. And Saturday is the day people are going to go out for music and dancing, that's the day they most want to do that. So that's why I was asking for, for this to be reviewed. Myself and my people take every aspect of safety and operating responsibly extremely seriously. We're working very hard at it. We feel terrible about this incident, but we also believe in the people that I've talked to, the sheriffs, that the sheriff department representatives that have been out handling this. This is something that could have happened anywhere. It's something that, that could have happened in front of a McDonald's, just as likely as, you know, whatever distance it was away from my restaurant. And it's something that, that could have happened even if we'd never opened the restaurant. I'm not taking it lightly, but I just think that's the reality of the event. The reason that we're asking for the condition is, I think the main reason for the condition is the feeling that we were going to disturb neighbors. And I, I believe there's now a clear pattern that, that that absolutely isn't the case without a single complaint call coming into the sheriff's office. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, if, if you have any additional questions.
At this point, Mr. Rosenbaum, you're open three to four months. What drives your need to extend this hour at this, at this juncture in, in the opening of the business?
Because Saturday night for businesses like mine is, it's the most significant night of the week for entertainment. And it, from a business, well, both from a customer standpoint, that's what customers want to do at our facility on Saturday nights. And also from a business viability standpoint, it's a critical night. If, if, if you're able to examine books of businesses like mine, many times Saturday night is equal to the rest of the week combined. It's a very significant percentage of business. It's very significant relative to whether or not we're a viable business.
Mr. Rosenbaum, would you be serving food from 11:00 to 2:00?
We serve, we don't serve a full menu, we serve appetizer-type food. We, we're not really open till 2:00. We start closing about 1:30 typically. So when I say we serve till closing, we serve until it's, it's not reasonable to keep the, you know, it's probably 15, 20 minutes before we know we're going to then turn lights up and, you know, and wrap everything up. But, but we intend for people to be able to eat something, you know, we want to do that business, and people do eat while they're there. So absolutely.
I mean, what time does your dining room close?
I think our full menu stops at 11:00. But it really depends also on, on the crowd and who...
Right.
We, we still have a chef back there, but, you know...
Maybe not.
People aren't ordering dinners after...
Right, at 11:00.
Really, after about 9:00.
Oh, okay.
They, they may still be eating, but they're, they're typically not ordering full dinners after about 9:00.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Rosenbaum?
The only other comment that I would have, not really related to, to our, our history or, or experience, but related to whether this minor modification issue, I'm not an expert by any means, but I think it should be noted that, you know, when this was noticed and fully developed, I think there were 40 people in the room, they were all supporters of the restaurant, there wasn't a single person that had enough concern that they wanted to voice their opinion. Then on whether or not we were allowed to open. Now, we're not even talking about hours of operation, we're talking about whether or not we would be allowed to have live music and dancing roughly between 11:00 and 1:30, let's say. That's really all we're talking about here, because we're open anyway, and there are people there. It's only a question of whether they'd be allowed to dance, basically, and whether, if we did have a band, which we typically don't have on that night, but if we did, whether they would be allowed to play.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, then I'm a little confused. I thought that we passed the, the condition that they had to close at 11:00. Is, am I...
I think so, yeah.
No, the, the condition was that live entertainment and dancing had to cease at 11:00 on both Saturday and Sunday evenings.
Not the facility?
No, not the facility has to close.
Thank you.
So it's that dancing and live entertainment stops at 11:00, which we, we have been doing.
misunderstood.
I do, too.
So, so all we're asking for is the ability to extend that roughly from 11:00 to 1:30, probably at the latest, sometimes earlier than that, but so that we don't have to stop people from dancing at 11 o'clock, if that's what they're there for. That's the extent of what we're asking for.
So today, if I understand this, then you're, you're continuing to remain open for just hanging around till 1:30, but no dancing?
Exactly.
And no, maybe food, maybe not?
Well, food if people want it, yeah. But bar, you know, appetizers.
So you are, you are today closing at 1:30 on Saturdays?
We're typically closing anywhere from 1:00 to 1:45.
Oh, two.
It just depends on the crowd.
Okay.
But we are stopping people from dancing at 11 sharp. That's what we're really asking you to extend for us.
Okay, yeah, and I, again, I'm reading here, and I didn't, I didn't read it correctly last night. It's a condition to allow live music and dancing until closing on Saturdays. Any other questions?
From...
I want to try to keep moving, because we're beyond 9:15. May I have Lieutenant Chambers then, please?
Good morning.
Good morning. Could you please state your name again?
Gary Chambers, Lieutenant with Tulare County Sheriff's Office, and I am the commander for the northern Tulare County portion, or ROCE, which encompasses also the Riverland and the Bullfrog areas. My concern is that, one, we have not had a noise complaint. Mr. Rosenbaum is correct with that. However, the last two weekends, we have been called out to that establishment. One for approximately a 15 to 20 minute, 15 to 20-person fight in the parking lot in front of the restaurant bar. And then Saturday at about 0:45 hours, we were called out regarding a shooting in front of the restaurant bar. The, in, in our report, and I, I won't go into a lot of specifics out of my report because it's an ongoing investigation, I hope you understand that, but he is correct, a security guard was shot twice, more rounds were fired than, than two rounds. The security guard was hit in both legs, I consider as a very important, significant event that occurred. And if you talk to that security guard, he will most undoubtedly agree with me. The fight, there was a fight inside the establishment in the, in the bathrooms, as indicated by some of the personnel at the restaurant bar. And then after they were escorted out of the bar, the subjects came back later while they were closing down, and then that's when the shooting occurred. It's significant for me. Two weekends in a row, it's really been the first two weekends where the weather has been really, really good. We just opened up the river for boating again, and so more and more traffic is coming in. And I am, I am not in a, I would not agree that extending the hours again would be beneficial to the citizens of Tulare County. And I look at it as an officer, safety and a community safety issue, and with these last, and we say, we, somebody said there was just two incidents, those are very two significant incidences. And they weren't, this one wasn't just a fight, it was, it was a shooting, and multiple rounds and multiple different types of ammunition was used. And we were very lucky that only one security guard was hit. So I am not in favor of extending these hours for dancing. If it was just dancing, would be a different story, but there's some clientele coming in right now that are not favorable, and I am not in agreement with this.
Lieutenant Chambers, in your estimation, was the shooting directed at a vendetta against the security guard, or was it just, he happened to be in the wrong place at the wrong time? I mean, I'm just asking that.
It had to be towards the, the business and the security guard.
Okay.
That's the reason they came back. They were escorted out of the business because of an altercation that happened inside the, the restrooms in the facility, where they were patrons, and they got angered and came back, which is in typical fashion of, of the individuals that we're, we're talking about as suspects here, and came back with weapons and...
Well, you think that if, they're still allowed to sit there and drink, that, well, can't do anything about changing that, but you don't want to add the dancing because anything about changing that, but you don't want to add the dancing because that would just attract more people there?
Certainly. You know, and if I had my way, we'd be shut down 11:00 o'clock, totally, you know, but...
So do you think the 11:00 is something that, if we hold to that, will help the situation stabilize longer term, or is there a probationary period in your mind to saying, well, you know, maybe in six or eight months or a year, then I'd be willing to consider going to extended hours there?
I think you can always come back and revisit something, you know, at a later time. You know, now we're looking at this at a quarterly report that we'll be providing, and I'm writing that report, started last week writing it, and we'll have it completed here within the next couple of days, but, so my first quarterly report will be coming out. And, you know, with these two incidents, you know, it's not real favorable.
Lieutenant, so I'm trying to get this straight in my head. It's not because of dancing that it's going to, it's because you think the dancing will bring in more customers, that if it's just people sitting there at the bar drinking, there won't be that many people coming in. But if they have dancing, more people will come in, which makes it more possible to have events.
Well, it's like anything else that you have, the bigger the crowd, the bigger potency that you have for issues, you know. I mean, you've got three or four people at the bar, and that's pretty much manageable, you know, but...
How many people are there? Do you know?
I couldn't tell you.
Dancing that night?
Couldn't tell you.
Large crowds, or...
Yeah, I couldn't tell you the number of people that were there. I just know that the ones that we interviewed and that were still there when we arrived. And you've got to understand, I have three people on during the weekends, and we're covering 280 square miles.
Oh, I realize that. I'm just trying to, you know, get wrapped around how much difference it's going to make there. That's the whole...
Sure. I think it'd make a big difference. And I'm not here so that he can't, Mr. Rosenbaum can't make money, that's not my deal, but I am, I am here for the concerns of the community, and I think it's a very vital concern, and it's one that I wear on my shoulders on a daily basis, and it weighs really heavy. And I could not stand up here today and tell you with a clear conscience that everything was completely fine. It's not, and I don't know if it's because of the lack of the security guards doing their job. I know Mr. Rosenbaum has put the security guards out there, but he can't be with each one of those all night long, so...
A question. Is this suspect, is he in custody?
They are not in custody at this time.
Any other questions?
There are actually two shooters.
Okay. Thank you, Lieutenant. Mr. Rosenbaum, do you have any comment you'd like to come up? We want to get moving on this, so make some decisions here.
Just one clarification, I'm not sure I heard this right. The actual shots were fired around 2:30 in the morning. I thought I heard a different time when the lieutenant was talking, but it was about 2:30 is when the shots were fired. There was a fight between three people in the bathroom that was immediately broken up. Those people were escorted outside. I've been following, certainly the lieutenant knows better the status of the investigation than I do, but as recently as yesterday, while there certainly could be a connection between that fight and who fired the shots, I was told that that hadn't been established, that we, that nobody was sure whether it was the same people that came back or not. There's certainly some logic to thinking that's a likely thing. And, you know, we did have tape of the people being escorted out, the three people being escorted out of the restaurant, which we gave to the sheriff's department. So they have pictures of those people, but I don't know that that connection has actually been formally established. We do have a good crowd there on Saturday night anyway, so there is a good crowd there. I might, while I do think we'll do more business if we're allowed to have the dancing and the entertainment continue, I don't think it radically changes who will be there on Saturday night from the way it is now. It'll be somewhat larger crowd, but I don't think it will radically change it. We do, we are serious about screening people at the door. That doesn't mean that we're perfect, it doesn't mean that we can't be better at it. We are going to be stricter now than we were before based on this incident, but we were serious about it before, and we are working with the sheriff's department and also Kingsburg Police in terms of the skills of being very good at keeping people out. The fight that happened in the parking lot the sheriff is referring to started between a couple of people. What we do, though, is we escort the groups out, whoever they're with. We don't let anybody in a group stay if somebody was involved in a fight. That's how serious that we take it. So we're doing the things we can to make the environment right. I understand the lieutenant's concern, and certainly don't mean any disrespect to him, but if you recall the January conversation, he would like every place closed at 11:00. That's, that, our business, my kind of business isn't viable in that situation. So I don't really believe it radically changes anything, asking for the ability to, you know, to let people continue to dance beyond 11:00 o'clock, but it does change the nature of what people do and their satisfaction with us, because they don't understand why we have to tell them, "It's 11:00, you've got to stop now." They don't understand. And I really don't believe it's going to radically alter anything. I think all the things we're doing security-wise, those are the things that alter stuff, but there can always be one rogue person out there that does something stupid. And I wish I could eliminate that possibility, but I can't. I can do all the things that we're supposed to do security-wise, and we're absolutely committed to that, and that's why I think we haven't had the complaints that existed in the past. So those are the additional comments I'd make. Thank you.
If there are no other, yes, sir. Yes, Lieutenant, please come. No, no, that's fine, come on.
I just want to, I will read just a little bit. This comes from our report, and this comes from one of the bouncers at the Bulldog Bar. And he advised that he was, he broke up a fight in the bathroom, involved a couple of northern Bulldog gang members. When he was asked, he responded, he stated that there were also some Nortenials there, which were northern gang members, and he stated that they were wearing solid red shirts, and some were wearing black, and they had shaved heads, and he said that he recalled two northerners and at least one Bulldog gang member involved in the fight, and that's when they were ejected from the facility. And I only interject as because they did get by their security, and I don't know anybody here in this county, or Fresno County, or Kings County, that doesn't know what red shirts, red belts, and black represents, and these are northern, southern gang members, and his bouncer himself called them Fresno Bulldogs. So there has, there needs some work to be done there, and I don't think that they're ready to move on.
And they weren't Fresno State alumni?
These were not, these were not Fresno State alumni, sure, sir.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Any comments? I'm going to close the testimony that we've just heard. Any comments from the commissioners?
I just, I don't know, maybe I'm getting old or something, but I remember in January, we were reluctantly, well, we certainly took into consideration what Lieutenant Chambers said then, but we also want to help the business, there's no doubt about that. We want Riverland to be restored. The problem that I see is Riverland is not a neighborhood place, so people come from great distances. This is critical, and maybe shutting down the entertainment at 11:00, because people need to leave and get in their cars before 2:30 or 2:00 o'clock, and go, I mean, if they're going to go to another place and still drink and carry on, there's plenty of places to do that at. I personally don't think Riverland's at this time, the timing's right, to restore that entertainment past 11:00. I think that's a key component. We also have to take into consideration that law enforcement, whether it's Fresno County or Tulare County, is strapped to the max. Their budgets are cut left and right, and they don't have the manpower that maybe they had six, seven years ago to respond to a gang fight, because that's what's happening here. So I would be, I think we should, at least for now, leave it as it is.
I think the other point is, when we approved this back in January, we were going to have these quarterly reports, and it's too early to see what the results of those reports are. Lieutenant stated that they were just going to issue their first report, and to make changes before getting any report, I think would, is a little premature.
What was the official opening date? Can someone tell me what that was? I forget what it was. Was it January?
Opening date?
Of the restaurant and bar. I think it was, I remember.
Mr. Chairman, could I just summarize the recommendation and clarify something?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to make sure it's clear that the proposed action here is not necessarily an approval or disapproval of the request to move the hours. It is, it's whether or not the planning commission wants to delegate that authority to planning staff, to the director, through a minor mod process. If that was the case, the director could or could not, he would have discretion to choose if he wanted to approve those hours of operation. Conversely, if we wanted to, County Council had a concern about that procedure, which they shared, the alternative would be to deny the request to defer to staff, and then if the applicant applied for a use permit amendment, then we would process that and bring that before you, and at that time, we would, you could judge the merits of the case and make a decision on that, but that would be at a later date.
But that would open CEQA again, right?
Possibly.
So you want us to approve the...
The original recommendation was...
The capability of the director to administer this?
That was the original recommendation, however, County Council, we're mindful of those concerns, the County Council has...
Okay. We can do that, but I'd also like to, from a commission perspective, and correct me, fellow commissioners, if you don't agree, I'd like to say that I would, my opinion is I would move to deny with a review in six months on this particular ordinance, or I should say condition, not ordinance. If we want a rule on whether the director can do this without our purview, that's fine. We can take that as one motion, but I'd also like to have a second motion on the table to deny this at this time, with a recommendation for review of this request in six months by this commission.
Well, you could do that as to the second motion, but I think you would probably include a finding that this modification is substantial at this time because of the comments that were received, therefore it wouldn't qualify as minor at this time.
Did you say substantial?
Yes.
That makes sense.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion to that, that we do not approve giving that delegation to the director and the authority to approve without notice or hearing.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
Elise?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
DS?
No.
Patliano?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
I just might make a quick comment there on my, on my vote here. Notwithstanding all the issues that have gone on, it is just, I feel it's a minor modification. We've done changes in the past, and in light of consistency, we've always considered that a minor modification for changes of hours of operation. In this case, the hours of operation are hardly changing, it's just a matter of whether they're going to dance or not. I don't believe that that is significant, I think that remains a minor, so that was my vote.
I would accept that comment. My only counter comment is, in the case of someone being shot at or fights breaking out, I think it's more than a casual episode that we're dealing with here.
Mr. Chair, I don't disagree at all. I'm just saying that we've got to look at this in the form of being consistent with the other decisions that we make, and that the decision is, of changing the time on this thing is a minor, in my opinion, a minor change.
Okay, so noted. So, Mr. Kimball, we want to still vote on this to accept or deny, or did we cover that?
We covered the action that's proposed today with that motion.
Okay, okay, great. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on now to timed items, and I apologize to those that were here on time. We probably should have assessed how much time it was going to take us on the untimed item. So on item 5A under public hearings, PSP 99-058, Joe Pinero and Sons Dairy Number Two, special use permit to expand an existing dairy from 529 total animal units to 3,937 total animal units. That's 2,350 Holstein milk cows plus support stock on 87 acres of an 810.5 acre site in the AE40 Exclusive Agricultural 40-acre Minimum Zone. The proposed dairy facility and associated wastewater discharge areas are located west of Road 112 and north and south of Avenue 120, approximately one mile northwest of the Pixley Urban Development Boundary into Tulare County. Our contact this morning is Amy Lazaraga.
Mr. Chairman, before we hear from Ms. Lazaraga, I can't even say her name, I would like to recuse myself from this hearing. I am within the sphere of influence.
Okay. So noted.
I also need to state to you that I will be commenting from the public.
All right. Commissioner Patiglione has recused herself for this particular hearing. Amy, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Amy Lazaraga, and I am the project planner for the proposed project. We are getting the PowerPoint presentation started, but just to briefly state, we did receive a letter from a concerned adjacent property owner. We received it yesterday, it was submitted to the county yesterday, and I received it this morning. I didn't have much time to review it, so I have asked the consultant for the project, or rather, the agent Bruce Livingston, to review the letter. I will go through the presentation, and once I'm done with the presentation, I'm going to go ahead and ask Bruce to step up and address the concerns in the letter. So again, my name is Amy Lazaraga, and I will be presenting PSP 99058. This is a special use permit for an existing feedlot expansion to a dairy. It does have an environmental impact report, State Clearinghouse Number 2009071121. The applicant is Joe Pinero and Sons Partnership. Joe and Mike Pinero are here today in the audience. Again, the agent is Bruce Livingston, and the EIR consultant is Quadna. Okay. Just because this is a project that has an environmental impact report, there's a lot of information that's going to be presented, so just a quick presentation outline. I'm going to go through the project description first, then the environmental impact report, mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. reporting program, findings of fact, and statements of overriding consideration. Then we'll get into the use permit itself, and then I'll briefly go through what the Planning Commission decisions would be, and then I'll call Mr. Livingston up to address the letter. Project description. So again, the project is located on the west side of Road 112, on the north and south sides of Avenue 120. It's approximately a mile northwest of Pixley, located west of Highway 99. This is a graphic of the project site. Does this have a pointer? Oh, okay. Oh. As you can see, the project site has the five parcels. All those parcels adjacent to the site in that purple color are those that fall within a 300-foot radius of the project site. We are required to send notice to all those property owners adjacent to the site. This is an aerial of the site. If you can see, and I apologize because I don't have the pointer, but on the, let me go back. If you see parcel two on this graphic, that is, now on this aerial, that is where the existing 18-acre feedlot is currently located. The rest of the parcels in yellow represent the entire proposed project site. This is a picture of the existing feedlot. These are photographs of the adjacent properties to the north, southeast, and west. This one is to the north. If you see where the arrow is at, that is the reference point of where that picture was taken. So if you're looking to the north, you can see the crop that's being grown there. It's just silage, I believe. And the area that's outlined in yellow, that's the existing feedlot. Again, this is a picture to the west, standing at the reference point, again, of where the arrow's at, a picture to the south, and a picture to the east. Again, standing where the arrow's at, that's where the expansion would go to. So what you see in the picture is where the physical improvements would go of the proposed project. In the distance, you see the existing feedlot, and now beyond that, you see some pistachio trees. This is just another diagram showing the reference point from the arrow and where the physical improvements of the project would go. This is a picture of the entrance drive to the site, and on your upper left and on the bottom right, that is a picture of the pistachio trees right adjacent to the site on the east side. Again, the project site, it's zoned AE40 for exclusive agriculture. Dairies are permitted in the AE40 zone upon the granting of a special use permit, and this is per Section 162B of the Tulare County zoning ordinance. Project facts, it's an existing 529 animal unit, legal nonconforming heifer facility on 555 acres. The proposal is for 3,937 animal units, 2,350 of those being Holstein milk cows. The dairy facility physical improvements itself would be on 87 acres, with 689 acres of farmable area and 34 acres of farm roads, water wells, irrigation ditches, that all equalling to 810 acres of the project site. The density for the project is 3.4 milk cows per prop acre and 5.7 animal units per prop acre. Some additional facts, milking cows will be housed in freestyle barns. Dry cows will be in shaded corrals with flesh lanes. At maximum design, the project will haul out 4,599 tons of manure per year. The project will provide 10 full-time jobs at the facility. On average, there will be about 22 daily trips. Majority of those are passenger vehicles of the employees at the site, and the main route of transportation would be for them to go south on Road 122, east on Avenue 120, and about 1.5 miles to State Route 99. Again, the project site, and again, I apologize about the pointer. These show the five parcels. All the parcels are owned by the Joe Pinero and Sons Partnership. This is the dairy facility itself. On your right side, you see what's actually the existing corrals. In the middle of the diagram, you see six freestyle barns. Those will house about 400 cows each. To the north of that, you see the milking barn, then there's a special needs, and loafing barn to the, right in the left of that. Then on the left side, upper left, are hay barns, modesty barns, there's a shop, some area for silage piles, and then on the lower left, you see the wastewater treatment, the lagoons, separator pit, those things that are required by the water board for their wastewater treatment. We'll get to the environmental impact report. The notice of preparation was sent out and closed on September 1st of 2009. There was a scoping meeting during that time, held August 20th of 2009. Only the applicant and the agent were present. There was no public comment received at that time. The notice of availability then went out and closed on December 27, 2010. There were some comments received from Tulare County Health and, yeah, Health and Human Services Agency, the Lower Tulie River Irrigation District, Caltrans, and the Air District. Those impacts that were reviewed in the EIR are, as you can see, a list of them, aesthetics, agricultural resources, land use, noise, transportation. Oh, I apologize for that. Many of the impacts addressed in the environmental impact report can be mitigated. There are 14 impacts that still remain significant after mitigation. Majority of those are air quality impacts. There are some hydrology and water quality impacts and cumulative impacts, again, that remain significant even after mitigation. As part of certifying your EIR, you would then move on to adoption of the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. Again, this is, if you look at, you received four packets. One of your agenda packets would be for the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. And actually, if I can just call your attention to, there would be two corrections in this, if adopted. One of them is to impact 3.312, number four, it says incorporate solid manure into field within two hours after application. That should actually read 72 hours after application, and that is consistent with Rule 4570. The other correction would be to mitigation measure 3.4.1.1, number seven, it currently reads no firearms shall be allowed on the project site. Staff recommends that we amend this to read except someone that has a CCW permit. So those would be some corrections in the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. Again, as part of the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program that has identified mitigation measures to reduce impacts of the project, it also identifies the responsible agencies that are responsible for some of these mitigation measures, and the operator would be required to accept the mitigation, monitoring program as part of the conditions of approval of the project, if approved.
Amy, question?
Yes.
You were saying no firearms on the project site. That's the whole 810 acres?
Correct. The idea is to, you don't want anybody...
Couldn't hunt on it, huh?
No hunting. No hunting squirrel. You can't hunt out there. And it's part of for habitat conservation and species. It's under...
That was private property. You can hunt on private property, can't you?
Not if they accept this mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. It's part of impact 3.4.1, substantial adverse effects on candidate, special status, or sensitive species of habitat, or habitat of sensitive species. So because of concerns over kit fox and swans and hawks and tricolor birds and those types of animals that we have in Tulare County that are sensitive, as part of the conditions of approval, we don't want anybody...
So this is going to allow then for vermin control or predator control, or anything like that, huh?
Can we address, can I have the consultant address that? We need some...
Yeah.
Okay. We'll table that one then.
I think that's pretty strong.
Okay. So findings of facts and overriding consideration. So staff would ask that the commission find that findings of facts, changes, or alterations have been required or incorporated that mitigate, avoid, or substantially lessen significant project impacts. Once I get into the special use permit itself, you'll see some of the alterations that have occurred to the project to mitigate and lessen impacts. As you can see, the project is a PSP 99, and here we are in 2011, just getting it approved. So it's gone through many different versions. The version that is being presented to you today is what was noticed in the NOP in 2009. There are specific economic, legal, public policy, social, and technological benefits that outweigh the significant impacts on this. So staff is recommending that the Planning Commission override those environmental impacts because of economic, social, legal, and environmental benefits. And just to name a few, again, in terms of economics, Tulare County, as of March 2011, has an 18% unemployment rate. This project will provide 10 full-time jobs. Currently, it only has a part-time staffer, in addition to all the other industries that deal with dairies, and where this project would benefit in providing jobs for those In terms of, I'm sorry, lost my place. Again, and that also for the social impacts. Legal, public policy benefits pursuant to Tulare County's general plan, this project, as you will see as I continue forward, does comply with the RVLP and the ACFP. So there is a legally established and persuasive public policy in Tulare County to promote agriculture, and dairy being one of those agricultural uses. So there is the public policy benefits of this project in that it aligns with the general plan of Tulare County. The environmental and technological benefits, there are a lot of innovative measures that are being implemented by this project, having to do with this control, NRC guidelines, water monitoring. So one of the ideas is also that these new dairies provide a model for future dairy development in the county. We will now get into the special use permit itself. The project does comply with the general plan and zoning ordinance. The project is in the RVLP and zoned AE. It does also comply with the Animal Confinement Facilities Plan. There are eight policies in the plan that I will discuss in detail, and all 34 standard conditions of approval, as outlined in the ACFP, have been incorporated into the project. And I apologize for the color, but Policy One, minimum project size is 160 acres. This project is 810 acres, so it meets the minimum project size. Density, it has a density of 2.4 milk cows. Maximum density is eight, so it meets that density, and 5.7 animal units, and maximum density per the ACFP is 10. So it meets the density requirements per the ACFP. Policy Three requires that there is a half-mile distance between any other confined facility. If you see on the graphic, to the north of the site, there is a heifer facility, and to the south of the site, there is a dairy. There is, in the ACFP, exceptions for a case-by-case basis. Reason being is acknowledging the existing conditions that currently exist out there in the existing businesses and operations that we have. So an operator is able to expand, as long as they don't increase the existing legal nonconformity. So in this case, the project proposal is to expand to the west, so it's not increasing the distance between the facilities to the north and to the south. Some other policies, the facility needs to be located at least a mile outside of any urban development boundary. The closest one would be Pixley, as you can see down on the south side. The lines around the facility show a half-mile and mile radius, so you can see Pixley is way beyond that. It cannot be located in the F1 zone. This project is not, can't be within 1,000 feet of a public park. This project is not, can't be located near any sinkholes. The EIR has determined that it's not, and it can't be within half a mile of any school grounds, and this project is not.
Amy, what's the setback for permanent plantings?
From, sorry?
Permanent plantings? There's pistachios there.
We'll get to that one.
Thank you.
This is the micro windshed for residential and agricultural uses. There are two residences to the south, and as you can see by the diagram, they are just outside of that micro windshed. So it does meet the minimum distance from those residences to the south. For agricultural windsheds, there's an orchard to the west and to the east of the project site. As you can see from the diagram, for the windshed with the two in it, the site just slightly abuts that windshed, but the way that the conditions read, it's talking about the confined facility itself. That portion of the project site is actually the hay barns, so even though it looks like it's right adjacent to it, the confined facilities, which would be considered, what the corrals and the freestalls are, are east of that. So it's not within the windshed of the orchard with the two. For the orchard with the one, that is an existing pistachio orchard. The project is developed to the west of that, so although it falls within that windshed, that is an existing condition. So if your commission were to approve the project, the expansion would be to the west. So it's not increasing the nonconformity. Policy Eight of your ACFP, oh, thank you. Policy Eight of your ACFP allows for a case-by-case review of such scenarios, again, knowing that a lot of these existing conditions exist. And the way that it reads is, the animal facility proposed meets policies when three and four above, and more detailed environmental review, for example, an EIR demonstrates that the proposed changes will clearly have no environmental effect that cannot be mitigated to a level which is less than significant. So in this case, this project does have an EIR. I know some of the concerns that have been brought up are flies. There is a fly abatement program that's part of the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. So again, this is a decision before the Planning Commission, staff's recommendation. Again, they've designed the project to not increase that nonconformity. So while the diagram does depict the facility within the windshed, it's not getting any closer to that existing orchard. Again, need to just go through the policies that I've just gone through. Were you? Okay. ACFP, as part of the standard conditions of approval for the project, the applicant would be required to accept the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program as part of the conditions of approval. There are 34 standard conditions per the ACFP. Engineering, Fire, and Health and Human Services has also proposed some conditions of approval. The project would also be required to comply with water board and air district regulations. Okay. So the recommendations before the PC. I'll go ahead and stop here at this moment and ask Bruce Livingston to come up and address the concerns that were put forth by a concerned adjacent property owner.
Good morning. My name is Bruce Livingston, Livingston Dairy Consulting. We are at 1635 East Prosperity Avenue, Suite B in Tulare. I hope you'll bear with me a little bit. I got this letter even after Amy did walked in, and she handed it to me, and...
You're referring to the letter from Staden Farms?
Yes.
What was the date of that letter? I don't see a date on this letter.
It's, I apologize. The photocopying on it is not too good. It's in the back, but it is date stamped, May 24th, which was yesterday, and I received it this morning.
Okay. And I might point out for the public, this letter comes to Ms. Lazaraga referencing nine points of concern, and we don't have it for everyone's consumption, so... And we don't have it for everyone's consumption, so we'll just have to go one by one here. So would you address each item one by one, please?
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. The first question has to do with the expansion of a current legal nonconforming heifer feedlot. And goes on and asks about why this expansion and about the law. There is a reference, it's a little bit vague, and I guess, should I read it verbatim?
I can read it if you'd like.
Well, you've read it, and I can speak to it or I should read it.
We just received it ourselves, so...
Okay.
Can we go ahead and read it verbatim so it gets read into the record?
Very well. Was the expansion of the current legal nonconforming heifer feedlot between 1984 and 1994 an approved permitted project? I realize this feedlot has been in operation a very long time. However, we may need a legal opinion as to whether or not increasing the herd size from 300 head or so in 1980 to nearly 4,000 is why the law was written. In the time period mentioned, this facility has nearly doubled in size. The reason I find it a little vague is that the proposal is to nearly 4,000. That hasn't been done. The reference to 300 head or so in 1980, in fact, the facility has been permitted for 539 animal units. That, by my calculations, depending on age, would be a maximum population between 841 head and 1,200 head. So, and I don't have any reference within this question to say, you know, it's more than 300, but up to what? So, but I would, in addressing what I think is the question, is was it expanded prior to this time beyond its legal authority? And I don't believe so. I don't believe there's over 1,200 head on that place. Now, I don't know, because again, we just got this this morning. Any questions?
Counsel, on this one, he's asking for a legal opinion?
I wouldn't be able to give a legal opinion to Staden Farms, because I represent the county.
So do we want... Does this need to be validated, this concern, in some way, from a legal perspective?
Well, I think as long as what we're permitting today is from the legal nonconforming use to the number that we are permitting today, then I think we're covered.
Okay.
Because we're looking at, you know, the impacts of this increase and whether or not we should approve it.
Sheriff, I understand, Mr. Livingston, the increase to 500 and some animal units was a legal activity.
That's what he said. That's what he said.
And so, from that point on, and I guess, I mean, assuming that was legal, then we're making a decision of where they're going to move from that point to the next, at nearly 4,000 animal units, right?
Correct. Continue. Excuse me. You'll have an opportunity in just a moment. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. You must state your name and address.
My name is Richard.
Please, please talk to the microphone. Thank you.
I apologize, I'm new at this. My name is Richard Staden. I'm the Secretary and Chief Financial Officer for Staden Farms, and I'm the one that wrote the letter. I apologize for getting here so late. It's just recent events, recent information. I found out far too late that I, I guess I have a dog in this fight, so I figured I better get here as quick as I could.
Okay, thank you.
If you have any...
We'll ask you, you'll have an opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Item number two, in your site plan, PC Exhibit A, is there a particular reason why the micro windshed for the orchard directly east and to the southeast was omitted? There are aflatoxin-related issues that should be addressed before construction.
Bruce, if I can just go ahead on this one, and I do apologize, he's making reference, or it's making reference to the packet that is the special use permit. And if you flip to Exhibit A on the far right side, he is correct, and I do apologize. What we can do is update this exhibit. This really isn't meant to show the windsheds themselves, it's more meant to show the project site depicting the five parcels. If you, and I don't know if you have the ADIR in front of you, figure 3.9-4 on Page 3-135 of the EIR, which is a section that addresses the windsheds, sheds does accurately depict the windsheds. That was the same figure that was shown in the presentation, so we can go ahead and revise those exhibits accordingly.
So it was addressed in the EIR, is what you're saying?
Correct. And in your presentation.
Okay.
Please continue. Okay, well, and my comments to that is, one, the feedlot predated the orchard. I'm not sure, I haven't been out there recently. I would have had a more accurate response, but I believe that the almonds that were there when this project started have been removed. They may have been replaced by other trees, I don't know. But if memory serves, the existence of a facility relative to a windshed limitation comes down to if you were already there, a guy can't buy a property next to you and plant trees and prevent you from developing your property. Item, any questions to that? Item three, the current feedlot has two manure pits or ponds, one currently serving as a dump site. Will these two pits be thoroughly cleaned before site work begins on the project? The answer to that is yes, that was part of the project all along. Item number four, in your project site map for PSP 99-058, I direct your attention to the property designated as number two and the property labeled as number 14. The difference between the elevations are significant along the boundary of these two properties. Will you be able to guarantee my field number 14 will not sustain runoff from this field and facility?
Excuse me, sir. Could you put that map up on the screen for the public? That was it, wasn't it?
Sir, I think he's making reference to the 300-foot radius project site map.
Right there.
Is it this?
There's 14 is the middle.
He's number 14, and he's concerned that he's going to have runoff, right? Is that, okay.
Well, there is an existing farm road there now. How well, to maintain now that it's brought up, it certainly would be reasonable to expect during the construction to elevate that road sufficient that there wouldn't be any problems. Of course, that goes back to Commissioner Diaz's comment that we'd have to worry about varmints. That's an issue everywhere during irrigation, that you have squirrels migrating from one to the other, tunneling from one to the other, then you get a breakout. It happens all the time. I don't know that there could be a guarantee, but certainly the proponent would, or the permitee would be within their responsibility to prevent that to the extent possible. Any questions? Okay. Item five, what actions will be taken on Property 2 adjacent to Road 104 to correct the continuing runoff problems? I'm not aware of those problems, but certainly that could be addressed during construction without too much problem. Number, item six, where will the access road south of the dairy facility separating Property 2 and Properties 12 and 14 lie in relation to the property line? Those are existing farm roads. I don't see any reasons why they would be modified to any extent. They're not access roads, they're not planned access to the dairy. The access is on the north side, both from Road 112 and Avenue 104. The primary access to the dairy is planned to be from Road 104 east to the facility itself. Any questions? Item number seven, what is the media used to construct roads to the feed storage area? Typically, those kinds of things are regulated by the Airborne Rule 4550, I'm sorry. And that requires decomposed granite, washed gravel of some sort to minimize dust. And typically, most of our operators and silage choppers, when there's significant amount of traffic, will apply water to the roads anyway, regardless of what the material making up the road is. Any questions to that? Number eight, will the facility comply with California's Conservation Management Practices for PM 10? That again is Rule 4550, and I would direct you to the Monitoring and Mitigation Plan, the impacts of 3.13.1, which says the facility will comply with Rule 4550, among other rules. Item number nine, what measures will be taken to prevent non-approved use of my farm road connecting Avenue 120 to the southern boundary of the new facility? I think that's not for me to say. For me, I would ask the Paneros to instruct their people to go around. I don't know, if that is a big issue, then, but it should easily be resolved.
A road could be constructed on Panero's side of the property line, I imagine, if they needed to access through there.
Absolutely. And just, this is not related to this letter, but I would like to, if I may respond or support Commissioner Diaz regarding the fire and hunting issue. When I read the biological survey, which is included in the EIR, and it's been some time, this project has been in the works for a number of years, but the survey says there were no burrows observed on access roads, no protected species been documented in the immediate project vicinity or on immediately surrounding properties. With respect to the salmon king kit fox, it says they have been reported within a, let me read it specifically.
Excuse me?
Having to, in a, has been documented within several miles of the subject site. According to the website, for these animals, that's over towards the preserve on Boswell property, which is about eight to 10 miles away. So, I think that, and nobody's hunting Swainson's hawk, we're pretty much talking about varmint control, or maybe even pheasant if it's on your own private property. I think that limitation is an extreme overreach. Do we have any other questions?
No, and I'm going to take a five-minute bio break. So I'll be back at 10:30. Fortunately or unfortunately, diuretics sometimes dictate the moment. I'll call the session back in order. Amy?
I guess we can open the public hearing if there's any...
Yes. Are you finished? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we make one clarification?
Certainly.
Maybe it's just a curiosity, but if staff or the applicant could clarify what aflatoxin is, it was in this letter, I think it would help to know better what that is.
Certainly.
It's on issue number two in the letter.
The question is, in the letter, item number two is referring to aflatoxin-related issues that should be addressed.
I think Mr. Livingston can probably address that.
Mr. Livingston, would you like to step forward and address that, please? What's the definition of aflatoxin?
Well, aflatoxin is a mycotoxin that can create health issues. It's sometimes present in dairy feeds. Some people like to say it's present in dairy waste. I think that the science is not particularly conclusive in that regard. I know that the water board has clear restrictions applying dairy waste to certain orchards, particularly orchards that are harvested on the ground, where there may be direct contact, I'm sorry. But that's typically relative to salmonella. If, and as the almonds that were there are harvested on the ground, maybe or maybe not an issue. I'm not, the pistachios, which are nearby, are not allowed to touch the ground during harvest, and they are processed in hot saltwater prior to drying and chipping, which pretty much mitigates each of those items. We have had mycotoxins, specifically issues in feed in periods of high humidity. All of the feed companies are very aware, because they, of course, would get the trickle-down liability. And your typical storage on-site, the commodity barn, as pictured in your facility map, is designed to turn over products that are brought in bulk in a very short time, preventing the creation of that mold, which would provide a development site for mycotoxin.
And again, I just did want to clarify that that exhibit is part of the use permit itself. And I, again, I apologize, we can change out the exhibit. Those lines are shown to depict the windsheds, but really what this is showing is the site plan. So it's making reference to what are the parcels applicable to the project. It does accurately show the site plan and the parcels and where the physical improvements will go. So the windsheds and the distances, that's more of an environmental issue that would be addressed in the EIR.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, and so I will accept comments from the public. Are there any individuals who would like to speak for or are opposed to this project? Can I see some hands out there? Anyone? Two. Could we start with, who is opposed to this project? May you, may you please step forward? I think so.
Nancy Pitliano, PO Box 9, Tipton, California. First of all, when I say I'm opposed to this project, as my fellow board members know, I don't, I'm not opposed to the project, and unfortunately, I'm opposed to where it's at, and it's, yes, it is a sort of not-in-my-backyard issue. And I do want to make that clear. I am very good friends with the proponent of this project, friends and neighbors, and have been for a long time. As you can see, I'm on, let's see, 112, I'm the almond orchard that they're talking about.
Where is that at?
On 112, let's see.
It's 25.
Yeah, it's the number... Yeah, the number's hidden.
Okay.
One of my issues that I have with this, besides my almonds being across the street, and if you don't understand, there is a huge issue with the fly vector problem and almonds and dairy sites. I don't know why they like those almond orchards. I think it might be because it's cool and shady, but they just invade those, they turn into their houses, that's where they like to go. The fly specks are an issue on almonds, and it's a grade issue, but it's also, as he was, Mr. Livingston was saying, the dust on almonds causes, dust is a breeding ground, try to explain this, for mite, and that's something we fight all the time in the almond trees. Another issue that I have, though, is on Avenue 120, directly across the street from this site, and I know they have moved their site plan back, but there's a very large dairy directly across the street from this proposed site, that we have addressed issues like that before. And then there's also a dairy one-half mile south of this site. Yes, south, I'm sorry. So that would make three very large dairies within a very close proximity. And those are my concerns. Like I said, I'm in farming. We support the dairy industry, we farm with them, but I just feel like that's the impact of this dairy. Mr. Livingston did comment that that feed lot had been there before we planted our trees. Very true, but there is a huge difference from four, five, let's say 500 cows to 4,000 cows, and the dust, and you can say mitigate, you can say, you know, I'm a farmer, we run a water truck 18 hours a day, and we are still not able to stop dust. And on a dairy with that many cows, units, I just do not see how they can possibly control the dust. Thank you.
Thank you. That was an opponent. Do we have some proponents of the project? May I come forward, please? State your name and address. We'd kind of like to move on here, we're running way behind, and I'm apologizing to the other applicants.
My name is Richard Staden. I live at 10812 Avenue 120. Again, I apologize for bringing this in so late. I wanted to go over this real quick. My basis, in my letter, my number-one point was expansion of the current legal non-conforming heifer feed lot between 1984 and 1994, an approved permitted project. I was going by not so much the number of head of cattle there, but the actual footprint, because in a completely different vein, I received copies from the Farm Service Agency that we used to use, and I guess we still do, in signing up for programs, and they are actually satellite pictures of that facility. And looking at the pictures I have, and the picture up there, it looks like that picture, or that size of the feed lot is larger than the two pictures I have, so I have that if you're interested. And let's see, you've got the windshed on the two, the pits, and on number four, the difference in elevation, yes, there's a farm road there, and it isn't so much that there are rodents or gophers, same thing, tunneling through, it's just capacity down on the western edge of the site, I think it's field number two, it'll fill up, there are times it fills up their tailwater recovery system and overflows, goes over the road, not under it. And in wet conditions, that same field, water will escape the field. There was a large, was a large berm there back in December when the, when the heavy rains hit, and it took that out and drained that field into ours and filled up our tailwater recovery system and flooded Avenue 120. So I think that's a significant, significant problem that needs to be addressed. And then as far as the roads, and if the Paneros would get a water truck and start watering roads down there, that would be good. Currently, if the road separating Paneros and us is watered, it's either done occasionally by the company that is bringing feed in, and it comes in on that road between our properties. Otherwise, I've never seen a water truck on the place. We do that. That's the road that we share. But other than that, if the dairy complies with the rules, then I suppose it should be built, but I think this particular, particular project is being shoehorned into a very, very tight, tight property that is relying on a number of exceptions to the rule. So that's my comment. I think we're going to need dairies in California, and right now commodities are high, so the more I can sell to them, the better, but at this point, I'd like to see these concerns taken care of before.
So you, thank you very much. You would not have any issues working with Mr. Panero to make sure that some of your concerns are folded into the project?
I'd like it done before it's approved.
You mean all of these points?
I would like an assurance that it will be done before the approval is there. Once it's approved and you construct, then I think it would be very difficult to rectify these differences.
All right, any other comments? Is the applicant here today, by the way? I'm going to give you an opportunity, we're going to summarize here to move on. If the applicant would like to come up and summarize on their project, you would be more than welcome to do that. And you may want to incorporate in some of your comments some of the things that were just laid out here by.
Okay, my name is Mike Panero. I'm in business with my father, Joe, and my brother David, who's not here today.
And address?
13881, Road 120 in Tipton.
Thank you.
As far as some of these concerns that you have, Richard, I mean, as far as a water truck, I mean, the dairy's not even going yet, but we have had water trucks areas from feed companies, and right now it's just a heifer feed lot, and so I never felt, I didn't know there was a concern on that. If it had came and talked to us, we could have easily taken care of that. That's nothing there. We have a water truck, it's at the dairy, and like I say, it's taken care of by the guys that chop our feed, that's what he's referring to, when there's a water truck there. So that's an easy one. And as far as, what was your other main concern? What item was that?
Oh, do you have the copy of the letter?
I have the copy, but I wasn't sure which one is main.
I think it's concerned about the elevation difference between the two fields there.
Yeah, for runoff.
Right, that's okay. And that'll be taken care of as the dairy is built, because it's going to be built up high, and that'll be a non-concern. That'll be eliminated.
It's number four.
It's there now, because the dairy's not there, but once the dairy is built, dirt's going to be built up high, and that'll remove that problem. And I think those are the two main things that he's referring to. And as far as the road, Richard, I mean, that's not even, we're going to have a road, the plan is to have a road built entering the dairy, because there's going to be milk trucks, feed trucks coming in, his road will not be touched. And that'll be discussed with our employees, and I mean, if somebody, I'm not going to swear, nobody's not going to make a mistake, and a pickup's not going to go through there, but that will be taken care of. If somebody does, that'll be stopped, because we're going to have our own road going in through our own entrance, entrance and exit on both sides, so that'll be a non-concern as well.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that's it. Thank you.
Just one question.
Excuse me, excuse me. Sir, could you come up here, please? Thank you very much, and state your name and address.
My name is Joe Panero, 13881.
Thank you.
I live in Tipton, and I've been in business since I came from the old country as an exchange student to this country.
Where did you come from?
From Terstada, Portugal.
Portugal.
Yes. And after I graduated, I met a young girl, which I married, and then my father-in-law kind of helped me out, and I've been keeping with my kids. There was just one thing here that he said that the road was bad. That road, we put gravel on that road, and if anybody wants to prove that I'm true, just please walk over there. And the distance we go is not even a quarter of a mile to feed the heifers, and the rest, to go all the way to the rest, sure, we go in the pickup, and even some of my neighbor, if I don't do it, he does it, old JR, which has 80 acres or so right next to us. But the road as of today, we put gravel on it, up to the place where we feed the heifers. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the public? Anything else? No? I'll close the public testimony, and my fellow commissioners, any comments up here?
No, I think Mr. Staden is right, they are trying to shoehorn this thing in, but we've done this in the past, and that's kind of been the way things have done, unless we have some discussion on changing our way and our consistency. You know, this thing looks like the EIR is in place, and so it looks like it's probably not going to be suitable.
If I can just say, we understand it's tight, but it does comply with the ACFP. They've designed the dairy in a way where they're not increasing the distance to another facility. There is a windshed issue, but the ACFP allows that that be taken on a case-by-case basis, assuming that it meets the other policies, which it does, and that an environmental document is prepared, which has been done. So understanding that it might be tight, but it does comply with the ACFP.
Could you put the site back up there for me?
You want this?
That'll kind of work there. The brunt of the facilities is set back a quarter mile, or is it a quarter or half mile? The majority of the housing facilities is going to, is it a quarter mile away?
Well, when you get into clusters, that's where we look at the half-mile requirement. So if you can see where they're at now, those right adjacent, it meets the agricultural, I'm sorry, the residential windshed requirement. The residences that are closest are outside of that, and then for the mile requirement, we're talking about clusters of 30 residences or more.
Right.
Which you can see are not within that distance.
How about that? Now, could you change that to the windshed for the almonds? So the almonds, now that's a whole mile there, isn't it, that you're depicting?
If you look, it's a micro windshed, so the figure to the right, I think it's, well, it's still about half mile. I'm sorry, I can't see the numbers.
All right, I would just wanted to get.
260, or 2,640 feet.
So that's a half a mile. Okay, so that's in compliance. And the other thing I just wanted to get in my head about the general location and prevailing winds, and I think it looks like I would expect the bulk of the almond orchard would probably not be impacted by the prevailing winds as much as certainly that dairy just to the south of it, so, okay, I just needed to see it.
So Amy, what I'd like to do, we have four items to rule on here, we'll take them in this order as they are in the agenda, to certify the final EIR.
Chairman, could I ask a question about the EIR before we go on? Could you go over, I know we do this on every dairy, but I'd just like to go over the overriding considerations. I'm wondering in my own mind, and I like the location of this, because we said a long time ago, we want to put them out there on the other side of the 99, and this seems to comply with that. That's the way I understand it, but the overriding considerations, I'm wondering how many times we can continue to do this, and if you could go over briefly what those are, because we have significant impacts with the dairy, there's no doubt about that. And there are other things that we're being asked to address now that, you know, maybe we're not addressing yet in Torrey County, but could you please go over the considerations?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could just, before we do that, I want to add one more clarification. I think it's along those lines. If we could also clarify, there's things brought up in this letter, number four and number five, which talk about runoff and fields draining from the site and to the neighboring properties. It would be helpful to clarify whether or not that is a pre-existing condition, or if this project will actually make that worse, drainage issue worse. And then it was brought up, there's a concern about flies, dust, mites, and things as effects on the neighboring almond orchard. I don't know that those things were specifically addressed in the EIR, but since they're brought up in this meeting, it would be good to pinpoint whether or not we want to address those through some kind of mitigation measure or add them to the list of overriding considerations.
A good point.
So, and I was going to mention that earlier, did we want to address any of these items in this letter and fold them in to the mitigating items that are already in existence?
Sorry, Amy?
So the question is, the letter that has the expressed concerns from Mr. Staden, do we want to include those or portions of those in the mitigation, and as it is laid out in the EIR report? So, Mr. Kimball, how do we want to do this? Do we want to just roll all of these nine points up and add them to the list in the EIR? We'll have to come back on that again.
Mr. Chairman, there's a number of ways we can handle it. We do have some experts in the room today. Of course, we could always address them at a future meeting. It would be good to, right now, we're making them a point of the record, and these things should show up in the final EIR at the end of all this.
I totally agree.
These issues were raised and then addressed. If we're able to address them at this meeting, we should hear it out. If we're not able to address them in this meeting, then we can.
Ben, I think certainly on the runoff, we can address that right now. We just say it's not going to be allowed. You're not going to, there won't be any runoff, and you're going to have to engineer that thing so that you're going to mitigate that problem, period.
That seems reasonable to me, too.
As far as the dust and mites and what? Far as the dust and mites and whatnot, um, they're out there. Um, I think we just discussed the fact that we were 2,000 and some feet setback. Uh, we're within, we're, that's, that's a half a mile setback. But other issues are to discuss, we're in compliance.
Can we not attach this to the EIR and, uh, and approve it with this as, as amended to the EIR as these items will be addressed?
They have been.
And?
Sure.
If they have, then, uh, we just attach the document, okay?
Right, you could, uh, add a condition stating there will be no runoff. And I think your commission may be deciding that there's no significant impact regarding flies or dust. You do the mitigation, that's already in the document regarding flies and dust. So, I think what I'm hearing right now is that the, what you would wanna add is the condition regarding the runoff.
And we wanna, we wanna open up to the applicant, if they have a way to address those things now. Say, for example, the flies. The, the, the neighbors are complaining about flies, and the neighbor has something they could throw into the mix that would address that, it would be good to hear that and get that on the record. It's really a matter of documentation.
Yeah, I understand, Ben, but I think we've discussed that. Isn't there a fly abatement requirement?
There is. As one of the mitigation measures in the MMRP.
Right, that's always required in the dairies.
Well, I, I'm, I'm unclear, Ben. You, you, you wanna cherry pick the items out of this letter and do something with them? I'm not clear in what you're trying to do here.
No, I, I, I wasn't familiar with, uh, fly mitigation. But if there are some things we need to add, this, we could do that, here, to address these issues.
Just generally, um, some of the concerns that were raised were the dust, flies. All those are already part of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, so that's been addressed. The one item that maybe can be added is the runoff issue. So I would ask council if we should be adding it as a condition of approval to the project, or should we be adding it as a mitigation measure to the mitigation monitoring and reporting program?
I guess it, it depends on what it's actually addressing. If it's addressing an environmental concern, then it would be a mitigation. Uh, but if it's just basically addressing, uh, a currently existing problem, and the applicant's going to agree on the condition as proposed by Staden Farms, then it could be a condition to the use permit.
Then can we propose, can I propose that we add it as a condition of approval to the project? Since I think that can be addressed in the project design at construction.
Yeah. Let's keep it simple. Excuse me.
And it's also addressed by the water board for runoff, correct? Okay. Um, if I can just backtrack real quickly in terms of the recommendations. We do need the commission to certify the environmental impact report. That is, um, the first item. Everything else is contingent upon you certifying that document. And what you're certifying is saying that, um, staff did carry out the process per SEQA, um, the NOP period, the NOA, um, scoping meeting. Um, and then just so you do know, those comments that were received by staff on the NOA, we did address the comments and sent those back to those people that commented. Certified mail, um, April 25th, so it was well before the, 10 days before the public hearing, and we did not receive any more additional comments. Um, at this point, I don't see that anybody is challenging the accuracy or, you know, of the, of the EIR itself. Um, it's more project-related items, so what you'd be certifying is that it's an adequate document.
So, any other questions, commissioners? So let's move into the, uh, final EIR.
I do, you know what? I just wanna, now we're at, this, it came back to me, and I forgot, and I wanted to address this earlier. I wanna get back to this, uh, no firearms thing. It's kind of a little pet peeve of mine. This looks like a left-handed way to, for gun control to me.
We can go, we can go at that on the next rule.
Is there gonna be a next? But no, that's in the EIR, isn't it?
Well, it's part of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, so we can address it there.
Okay, it's not part of the EIR?
No, I don't think so. I didn't see.
It, it's, the more appropriate place for it is the second, um, action.
Okay, so we can certify the EIR.
The first action is just, you're certifying that the environmental impact report is an adequate document for the review of the project.
Okay, then I'm ready to.
All right. Could I have a motion to select option one, Amy?
Uh, I'll make that motion that we certify the, uh, final EIR as an appropriate document.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
No.
Diaz?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Second action, adopt findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations.
Were you gonna go over that some more?
I just wanted to, I still wanna go over the, I know we're dealing with air and water quality on both of these overriding considerations.
Well, let's, right now, the adoption of findings and facts and statement of overriding consideration are contingent upon and rest on the fact that we've adopted these mitigation measures. So let's go through the second item, and then we'll get into the statements of overriding consideration. So there are some changes in the mid, well, there's a question on one of the mitigation measures, and there's a change on the, on another one, so, um.
Yeah, uh, Amy, I have a question, may I? Chair? Question, uh, now this is a time to talk about that.
Correct.
Firearm issue. Where did that recommendation come from?
Um, it came, actually, hold on. Um, if I can call Cynthia Echeverria to the stand. She is our environmental coordinator.
Cynthia Echeverria, the county of Tulare. That is a, um, typical mitigation measure that is in the EIRs, and I believe it stands from one of the Fish and Game or Fish and Wildlife Services protocols for, I believe, kit fox or Swenson's hawk, and I can't recall which one. But, um, we, we can modify it if you, uh, feel that we need to, as long as we don't, um, uh, as long as the significance determination doesn't change. Uh, when thinking about it. And also, I thought we were gonna add in a change that, that you could be permitted, or if you have, what is the?
Yeah, CCW.
Yeah, the CCW.
Right.
So if you didn't have that, I don't think that you could have a firearm on you anyway, or that particular firearm on you.
Not concealed, but, yeah. Well, but the way this reads, you can't even carry a shotgun, and you can't hunt, and you can't control varmints, and you can't control predators.
And we can modify that. I don't think it would change.
Why don't we just, why don't we just strike it? It's not been in any others that I've ever seen. Have we ever seen this before? Has anybody seen this, uh, before in any, uh?
I have.
In, in the EIR?
In EIRs, yes.
I guess I gotta read them a little closer then, huh? Because I haven't seen it in, ever.
And the applicant does agree to the mitigation measures, so they, they would've had a chance to, to, to look at that.
Don't, and I understand that. Problem was, it runs with the land, and so if he sells the place, it runs with the land, and so the next guy's gotta, they deal with it, too. Uh, this is just a left-handed way to, for gun control, as far as I'm concerned, so I would, I don't know, it's up to the commission here, but.
Mr. Chairman, could we propose a condition then that states that we don't allow the hunting of those specific species that are endangered?
Well, that, it, that's fine. But, but not that you can't carry a firearm. This is Tulare County. And as far as enforcement, every, they're gonna be up at Bullfrogs with three deputies in the county, so there won't be any way to enforce it.
So, um.
Do we have some, what, okay, so?
I have, I think I have a recommendation up here from Commissioner Diaz to strike that from the, uh, documentation.
From the mitigation and monitoring?
Mitigation and, and, uh, monitoring. Do you have any other comments on this?
Chairman, I think we'd have to rely on our experts to see whether or not that would be a significant, change the impacts to more than significant, if it would affect the mitigation.
Would, would the commission accept rewriting the condition to read that no hunting of those specific species? Um, I think.